I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in our eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, always thank you for the needed rain and I hope for more to come as this state and others need lots of it. Please be with our Board of Education as they make decisions that affect our students and staff. Spring is an exciting time for all of us in Pock City schools. We want you to be with our students and staff. Also, Paula, I want to thank you for the men and women in armed forces. Help, just be with them as they help protect us here at home and abroad. In your name, amen.
Presentation, American Union, Presentation Employee of the Month for Certified Employee of the Month is Denise Baldwin.
Denise Baldwin is very deserving of April Employee of the Month. She not only works tirelessly to take each of her students from wherever they are when they walk into her classroom to as far as they can go in the nine months he has them, but she is also always there for them and her coworkers outside of the classroom. Denise organizes our Fall Food Drive each fall, coordinates our Gifted and Talented Program, and is actively involved in it. She tutors fifth grade students after school in Title I tutoring, but also sacrifices her plan and lunchtime several times each week to tutor her students and provide extra intervention times for those who cannot stay after school. She organizes our yearly talent show and field day at the end of the school year. Denise is also like a one-woman welcoming wagon when it comes to our new staff members at Garfield. She helps our new teachers find housing, offers them assistance when needed, and even takes them out to dinner to make them feel welcome. We at Garfield cannot think of anyone else who loves and works so hard on behalf of students and staff as Denise Baldwin. We are so proud to have her represent Garfield Elementary as the April Certified Employee of the Month.
Thank you Denise. For the Support employees of the Month, there were two, Tyrell Hills and Penny Jackson.
Tyrell Hills has played a vital part in the implementation, monitoring, and training regarding our new student information system, Power School. Since April of 2013, Tyrell has been preparing our district to switch over from ISIS to Power School. He has entered standards for all grade levels, from 4K through 12th. He has distributed tutorials to staff regarding the implementation and how-tos of navigating the system, set up attendance, established discipline, formatted, debugged, and single-handedly created an elementary standard-based grade card from the ground up. There's more. As you can imagine, many issues have come to light since the full implementation of this new program. Frederick Douglas said, "If there is no struggle, there is no progress." If this is true, then Tyrell has made a lot of progress this year. Throughout each trial presented by this new program, Tyrell has remained calm and composed. He has met with the curriculum department regularly to troubleshoot and brainstorm regarding all the issues which have occurred. He has carved out time to attend meetings and assist staff such as counselors to prepare for testing. Many times throughout the year, he has been over backwards to ensure this implementation has run as smooth as possible, and he has done so with a smile and a can-do attitude of determination and teamwork. Tyrell is a joy to work with and a real asset to our district. We could not have made this difficult change of switching our student information system without him.
And for the Friend of Education, Kendra Ladner, Fairmont County, Crown Elementary.
Thank you for finding us tonight. It is an honor to present Kendra Ladner with the March, excuse me, I should say April, I apologize, Pock City Friend of Education Award. Kendra is the mother of Brady, a sixth grader at West Middle School, and Riley, a third grader at Triot Elementary, and they are with us tonight. Mrs. Ladner is an involved parent at Triot Elementary. She serves Triot Elementary in many capacities. She's completing her second term as PTA president, thank you, thank you. During those years, she has strengthened our PTA to include more parents. Kendra is a worker bee. Last year, the yearbook committee chairperson resigned her position mid-year. Kendra jumped in and organized a group of parents to produce a yearbook full of memories for our students. This year, she's educated many parents and teachers to send in pictures to the Replay app that has resulted in more pictures and more parental involvement. Kendra is also the editor of the monthly Trout Twister Tail Newsletter. This newsletter highlights the activities in each classroom and keeps parents informed. Kendra and her husband Zach Ladner, who's here with us tonight, have revitalized the annual PTA sock hop. We now have a new band combined with some old-fashioned family fun. This year, an estimated 400 people attended the event. Kendra solicited many parents and teachers to help with this event. We need involved parents in our schools today. Kendra Ladner is a great role model for parental involvement. Thank you for your support of Triot Elementary. We appreciate it. Now Kendra, we could not get her schedule to match our schedule, so she is going to come out Thursday, and Shelley's coming out, and we will do another presentation so the kids can see it. Thank you.
Mary, where do you want?
We're going to go in studio.
Okay, so the award winners will follow Mary Ladner. She'll take you into our studio.
Hey, there's a comment. Public comment, we had no one sign up for a big comment. So we'll move on to section numbers. 4.1 is centralized registration.
Terry and I wanted to give you an update on our centralized registration process that will happen this summer. We spent lots of hours planning and making sure we got all of our bases covered for this process. Typically, our patrons have been asked to complete paperwork, like eight or nine forms in the spring, and then they get to do it again in the fall when they return in August. And we sent out a survey early on, and that was the number one thing that our parents said they returned through spilling out those forms in the spring and again in the fall. So we have combined several forms, so we have gone from eight or nine down to four. And some of those will are baseline, so after this year, we'll be collecting some of those forms as well. Our process will actually begin for our Pock City school employees the last week of June, so that will be our practice run, and that will give us a couple of weeks before we roll this back to the public to work any of those last minute bugs that we get. What Terry wanted to do was just put information. We will roll this back to the public on July 13th to the 16th and July 20th to the 23rd. As you can see, our times will be from 8:00 to 4:00 on Monday to Wednesdays and 9:00 to 7:00 Tuesday to Thursday. So we wanted to accommodate those people that could not get off work during the day and could see us in the evening time. The documents that they will need to register will be certificates for those students in entire district. We did have some students that returned and did not have those certificates on, and we used to send letters to those parents asking that documentation. So returning students will not have to provide that information, but they will need to provide the group of residency and the shop records for those students entering 4K kindergarten seventh and eleventh grade because there are additional qualifications that are required in those grade levels. A custody or guardianship if viable, and we would like to have those four documents on file so we make sure we have all of our basics covered if, you know, we have any issues with parents with custody. Our social security card, driver's license are government-issued photo ID and parent guardian, and will protect us from all of our parents or guardians for our students this year. We are in the final stages essentially of identifying staff that will do this process, and we're going to need this week to, anyway, we're going to need to finalize, look at the facilities, and make sure we have everything that we need in place, and then we'll have a week of training, and we'll be ready to roll this out for last week of June, June for our school employees.
We have also worked really hard to create district documents and also advertisements to get the word out when the time comes, and we will have banners up around town that will be explaining to parents what dates that these will be occurring. We will have signs at each of the slides that will direct parents back to the centralized registration center. If they show up and haven't registered yet, we will be sending out also an informational sheet regarding all of these, all of these documents that they need to register, and then also an informational document that will go out that will let them know when all the back-to-school nights are going to be and when they can pick up schedules and that sort of thing.
Barbara, would you explain to the board why we're requiring even current students to go through this process, bringing a birth certificate, proof of residency, all those things we're asking those kids to do?
Well, the state requires us to have some type of birth certificate or birth record on file, and when we did an internal audit, we found that we have several at some different birth sites that do not have that documentation. And so we need that, just, you know, just let it say to the child, so we know if this person actually has custody of these children in our legal guardian system. With the proof of residency, we have families in our district at our T V schools that don't have a transfer or they don't live in that area. So they maybe at one time lived there, or they've used their grandparents' address or something, and so we want to create room in those schools for those children that live in that district or have applied for a transfer. So we will service those kids first. With Lincoln, we will have to offer choice again for those students, so we will place those students, after we've completed this enrollment process, we will place our choice students first, then we will look at our students that actually live in that district, and our transfers will be accepted if we have room at those school sites. But we want to make it as convenient as possible for those students to attend at every school possible, and we know that we have many schools and students that don't have.
A question Barbara, I have, and it may be to Brett more than to you or to Terry. Obviously, anytime there's change, there's going to be a few people fussing about it. I'm hearing a lot more positive comments than negative, but the one concern I have, and I hadn't thought about this, is where are you going to park all these cars when they come down?
Well, we think that by having our employees go through this process in June, that will take several, you know, several, lots of traffic away. And then we have parking in the back, we have parking in the front.
You're looking at probably five to six thousand cars.
Well, what we have, if you look, we have, we have eight days just for our.
And they're all coming to come the first day.
They may, but we're going to hopefully have a grievance to say, you know, this is a process, we have all these times available. That's going to be part of our publicity, that it's not a one-time thing, and it's, you know, it's not going to be, if you don't come on the first day, you're not going to get the school of choice.
But that's, that's going to be their, their general opinion if it's not advertised.
And that's for us to advertise that as well, to make sure. We have flyers that will go home, a letter party on the students, we have a hand plan that will go home for all, with all students with development for elementary, or information for elementary, middle school, and high schools, so they understand that this is not the intritute night, this is getting all of their paperwork complete and ready for them to go with their schedules.
But yeah, that's, that's the only real concern that I've heard, and parking could be an issue down there.
Well, I'm sure it will be the first time. We, obviously, this is going to be a learning curve. This year will be the worst year just because after this, we won't have to have everybody come in and pre-enroll and be in a physical presence. I mean, as we move forward, we'll be able to do this online, but the big issue this year is getting the residency issue and getting the correct residence for everyone, and that's why it's going to be so long, you know. Robin, I think that probably, and we'll continue to talk about this, we may decide, and I've never really talked about this yet, maybe we want to assign certain days, certain letters in the alphabet, certain days, just because there's no, this isn't giving anybody a specific spot, this is just getting our, our information accurate.
And, you know, we discussed several times the issue of our human names and scheduling by school, scheduling by alphabet, but you still have people that have children in their homes, that you may have some in the As and the Bs and some in the Ws. So when we do that, then we're forcing them to come back to us two times, and so we would like, but this could be a very simple process, so those returning students will come in, they will check their documents that they brought with them, they will be with a checklist so they know everything that they need to have with them. We will have personnel who will be sitting at computers, so they will check address, phone number, and emergency contacts, and those will be changed immediately in the system.
So you've already got the kids in the system, you're just going to update, you're just going to fill out their name when they walk in, and this too, this, and they're going to be there, this is what we don't have.
Yes, our secretaries have linked families as well, so if, Mr. Dussel, you had three children, wanted an elementary, middle school, and high school, we have those linked together, we make that change one time, and it makes it for all of the children that are late to you. So it's, you know, it's going to save, it's going to save overtime for our secretaries, it's going to save lots of stress at the school sites. We will have this process complete, the first day when principals back to work. We will have transfer meetings, and so the secretaries should have their class list, and when the teachers return to work, they should have their class list ready. Sometimes, it's been the ninth before school started before those teachers actually had their class list. So we're hoping that this will alleviate lots of stress.
So you, you'll get out there, when they do go to their schools, they won't have to do all this stuff?
Right.
So basically, they're just going to get their schedule, see the teacher, and that's it?
That's correct. At the secondaries, they will, they will pick up their schedule, and they may have to pay their, like, laptop fee and any class fees that they have, but all of the extras that they normally stand in line for, for your yearbook, the calendars, all those things, those will be optional, it'll be in a separate part of the route, so if you want that, you're free to go over and buy your permit you want.
This is during, this is downtown?
This will be, no, this will be at the school site. Yeah, no, we have central registration, and then they will pick up their schedules at their school sites, but if you won't have a line, it will be pick up your schedule and take a laptop fee.
But you'd like to remind the people at those schools at the second time, if somebody comes in, they haven't registered yet.
We will have signs that say that.
Yes, yes.
We have them already created, they'll be up, yes. Also, another thing regarding everyone showing up at the same time, you know, the public will have to understand that this is a window of time. If there is a large line, then it's your priority to stand in that line way, but you don't have to, because it's a window, so, of time that you can come. So if you come there and there's a long line and you don't want to stand away, then you can go back home and come back the next day. So again, there shouldn't really be an issue of people standing in line, because there is a window of time that they can come in and reach it.
I look, we need to get some power on the TV, plus we need to get the radio stations.
We, we have plans for that, yes, we have banners that we're going to place in specific places around town, we're going to have signs on longer mats, casinos, grocery stores, and we're going to, we're going to get off the places as well as all the information we send home with the kids. We're, Terry and I will be on Wildcat Chat, we will probably record something in the studio so that the link is posted on our website so people can go in and listen to a, this is why we do that.
Plus, especially on the TV there, whatever, the list of whatever you've got to bring, you know, blast it up there for a long time, and then they change.
And then.
Something like that, I would think, the most, the most we can, I think it's going to be a great thing. Robin and I talked about this last year, but there's got to be some, some change because it's such a.
I think the real key, you've hit it, is you've got to convince the people out there that being there day one is not going to get you that transfer ahead of that guy that shows up the other one. That's because they're all going to go early to make sure that they get in, they're going to think they're going to go early to get in, to get that transfer or whatever they want before they fill up. Because in the past, once Pasture had 30 kids or whatever their magic number was, it got a lot harder to transfer.
Correct.
So that's, that's the history they're living with, so educating them on that, I think, would be real pretty.
Our forms will also be online, so they can access those forms standing in and complete the forms and print those off at home, so they don't have to spend time with us.
There are also question and answer, and some frequently questions and answers that will be posted on that we have brainstormed about, and links to those, as you, as you read through about the registration process, if you have a question, you can click on that link, it will go right to it, and give you that information that you need, so. It's, we've gone through a lot, a big process trying to get it all in place, and that doesn't mean that we're going to miss something, but we've thought a lot.
I assume a lot of the parents have emailed us, surprised that we've already have?
Yes.
And that's going to send out, send out a big one to them and say, here's, we need to go get these information to fill out ahead of time to bring with you, is that what you're...
Sites have already, some sites have already done that.
Okay.
And so they've sent all that information to the parents.
Yes.
Yes, this information will come, and some of them have sent that, put this in their school newsletters, but again.
Will you put it on all the marquees around?
Yeah, the next thing I understand, if they went and filled out something that they can bring with them that's already done.
Yes.
That way they'll have it, or they'll just make sure they'll get a ready form. They're trying to help you guys in the long run.
Our students' new target will, will involve in a separate, or register in a separate part of this process, so is, in our, in our, the old board administration building, our returning students will go to the left where the board area was, and our new students will go to the right, and they will receive their packet of information along with the checklist that they're going to need to return to us. They're welcome to stay and fill it out, or they can take it home and bring it back, or they also will have forms online that they can complete for a grant return to us. So our records will be requested then, even though these whole districts won't be in session, they have our request waiting for them when they return. So we think this will be a smoother process. We know that we will have more accurate information on the student information system because it will be entered basically by one person, and that person will be well-trained in the process of what we need as part of our reporting to the U D.
I know you've put a lot of time and effort into this, and I appreciate that, and I hope for it as well.
Well, as I said, we're going to have our, we're going to have our first little vote out with our employees, so, you know, if things don't go well, that gives us two weeks before we go to the public to see them make those changes.
Any questions? So first, Mr. President.
Well, I just, you know, again, we're at that time of year where legislation keeps getting thinner and thinner, and I just want to report out on a few bills to you. First of all, we don't know anything about the budget, that is still, those negotiations are still, I'm sure they're taking place between the governor's office and the leadership in the House and Senate, but it's not being shared with members of the legislature or with the public, so we don't know what those negotiations are. I still, while I'm hopeful that we will not see a reduction in funding, we are planning for that. And the good news, if there is any good news, is that because of the correct calculation of the funding formula, we received some additional dollars in December, or in January, those are dollars that we'll receive now on, but basically, they raised, they put additional million dollars into the budget at Pock City Schools. So if we do take a funding cut, we'll be better able to handle that cut than we would have been otherwise. The problem with that is it makes it, you know, we had some dreams about that money, and that dream was to do things and things different, to lower some class sizes and maybe be able to even to do some new programs, and while we still have allocated that money temporarily for that purpose, I'm under no illusion that once we know exactly what the budget is, we may have to pull back on some of that. The, I guess the good thing is, is that most of our hiring of staff takes place in the summer, so we will not probably have done a whole lot with those positions until we get to that time. But anyway, that's the budget outlook, and it's not good, and there's even some discussion now that what we're seeing as an economic downturn that many people thought would be short-term, but this may be a longer-term downturn, and of course, if that happens, that would, I mean, it would really be devastating for us as a state and for schools of the state. You know, we're already 22% less in our state aid than we were in 2008 when the recession hit. I'm not sure how low that can go, but evidently, it can go lower, and, you know, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I think that what we've seen is that most of the recovery that we had since 2008 was a recovery because of one sector of the economy, and that was the oil and gas industry. And, you know, we've been through this before several times in Oklahoma, when oil and gas dominate our budget and the revenue part of our budget the way they have the last few years when the downturn comes, so we're hit. It's complicated more because of all the tax cuts we've given. If you remember, those taxes we had were in place, really, most of those came into play after the oil bust in the 1980s, and they were taxes that were put into place to allow our state to function, to pay for education and to pay for other state obligations because of the loss of oil and gas provision we had back then. And so here we are today, back in the same spot, the rest, the oil and gas industry's good, we cut taxes, oil and gas bottoms out, now we have lack of revenue. The problem is, is that now it takes the supermajority in the legislature to pass a tax increase or a vote of the people. And so, you know, I don't, again, I don't know what the answer is. You would have thought that a 22% reduction in education funding would spur something to happen, but it hasn't over the last five or six years, so I'm not very hopeful that you'll see our current legislature advocate any ideas that are going to bring more revenue into the state, unless we do something else to gain it, unless somehow, I don't know what that would be. I guess we could take up all the restrictions, and we could do everything at our casinos that we can do in Las Vegas. Just to kind of give you some flavor, legislature's lots of bills to improve student health and safety. We have legislation that will require us to teach workplace safety to students. We have a piece of legislation that's going to require us to talk to our students about sport safety, and then we have another piece of legislation that would require us, the State Department of Education, the State Health Department, to develop a flyers, for lack of a better term, that we will post in our, in our, in our facilities, warning our athletes of sudden cardiac arrest. We have legislation to expand charters. The legislation that I think is going to ultimately pass as a bill by the lead any, it will expand charters to all throughout the state of Oklahoma. It will have a requirement that those charters focus on athletics students, and it will also put some requirements that if, if we ever get a student, a school evaluation or grading system put in place, that, other than the A D S system we have right now, when our new grading system goes into place, that any charter school that scores within the 5% and 5% of all schools in Oklahoma, that that charter school will lose its sponsorship, in other words, it will have to be closed down, unless it's repied by the State Board of Education. Then the final, specific piece of legislation I want to talk to you about is House Joint Resolution 1024. If you remember, there's been a lot of discussion the last few years about the Admiral Reversion Fund. Back in the... Uh, back, um, in the, uh, early night, early night, late nineties, I believe it was the late nineties, maybe the mid nineties, we had a, a piece of legislation passed that constitutional, actually, was a resolution voted on by the people said of Oklahoma that, uh, made possible what we call the Quality Jobs Act. And that's a piece of legislation that, uh, establishes a procedure for, uh, for, uh, manufacturing firms, uh, to apply for, uh, basically a grant or to be improved into a quality jobs program. There are certain criteria those firms have to meet. And if they meet that, one of the benefits they get is they get forgiveness of their property taxes for a five-year time period. Now, the way the program works is the state of Oklahoma pays their property taxes for them. Uh, to pay for the program, uh, the constitutional amendment set aside two percent of income tax revenues to pay for that tax exemptions. Uh, since the Quality Jobs Act was put into place, it's become a very popular program. And so each year, the amount of money that's granted to companies in the Quality Jobs Program exceeds two percent of state revenue, uh, especially in the current situation where state revenue is down. Uh, and this has been dealt with several ways over the last few years. Uh, we've had supplemental appropriations to the Quality Jobs Act fund. We've had some years where, uh, the Quality Jobs Act was funded out of the next year's revenue. And in those situations, we did not receive our Quality Jobs reimbursement until after July first. You may remember that, some of you have been on the board long enough that, that you remember when that was the case. Uh, there's lots of, of discussion about this and a lot of complaining on the parts, part of the legislature about this program. Uh, you know, to me, the solution's pretty simple. Uh, you have two percent of income tax revenue that's set aside and you just wouldn't grant all your job status to any companies once you've exceeded the two percent limit. But we don't think that way in the state of Oklahoma. Uh, we're happy to continue to spend money that we don't have and take it from the programs. Uh, what HJR ten twenty-four would do was it, it would basically shift that responsibility to the county commissioners. It's a constitutional amendment. It'll allow the county commissioners to grant exempt manufacturing status by a majority vote of the commission, which means in most counties, that's two commissioners. And then grant that exemption for one to five years and forgive either, somewhere, all the way from one percent to a hundred percent of the Avalor taxes that manufacturing company should pay. What it does not call for is a reimbursement to school districts. Uh, I think this is a bad piece of legislation. It is passed from the House. We have a lot of work to do in the Senate. Again, uh, it is, you know, my belief that the purpose of this law is to take the state responsibility on giving exemptions, shift it to county government, and then basically deprive school districts of the money that they should receive. Now, the argument will be, and it always has been, well, you don't, why should, why should schools get the money? Because right now, that piece of land, just typically is this new construction. Somebody comes in and starts a, a company and, or there's been a, in the instance of Roddah Foods, a business has left town. You've got a piece of property, it's not earning any revenue for you. At least if you put a business in there, it will, uh, generate, it'll pay more income tax dollars and people generate more sales tax and those kinds of things. So what's the harm in giving them free property taxes? Well, there are a couple of things. Uh, first of all, property tax revenue is the foundation of the school funding formula. I mean, it, it is, it is the seed core, for lack of a better term, of school funding. Uh, typically, when a company comes into town and it does bring in new employees, it brings children. And without property tax revenue that that company generates, then typically, you're not going to come close to having enough revenue increase that's going to, uh, pay for the additional buildings, other things you need to do for your schools to meet the needs of those increased students. Okay? Uh, other governing entities have the ability to raise revenue through either sales tax increases or in the, at the state government, you could theoretically raise income taxes. Uh, school districts can do neither of those things. Uh, the county government could, uh, grant count a manufacturing company some type of Avalor exemption, but then raise sales taxes. And I know that not all manufacturing companies pay sales tax on their product, but that doesn't mean that there's not, that you can't raise the sales tax on everybody else to pay for whatever revenue you're losing in property taxes because of that. Uh, so this is, this is a lose-lose, in my opinion, for school districts. The other thing it does is it puts the Board of Education in a terrible position. Right now, when, uh, the Ponce City Economic Development Authority makes an agreement with a company and applies for them to be granted, uh, property tax exemption to the Quality Jobs Act, it's not an issue for the Board of Education or really, not, we, it's, it's great, you know, we don't, that's, that's great. We got a new company coming to town, we got a building being bought and refurbished and somebody else going into operation. It's a, it's a win-win for the community. But in this case, it's gonna pit the Board of Education against economic development. Because you're gonna have to make a decision about whether or not you're gonna oppose the granting of a property tax exemption to an employer, to a potential employer in this community. And if you, and if you just roll over on those things, then you're giving away potentially millions of dollars in revenue to this school district. The Quality Jobs Act right now, money that we receive each year, that it brings us out there somewhere, what is it, what was it last year? How much money can we receive in Quality Jobs reimbursement?
It was probably like one point six million.
How much?
About one point six million with our refunds.
About one point six million dollars of revenue for this school district. And, you know, it's, 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 it is a, again, uh, from my perception, the whole purpose of this legislation is to shift the responsibility. And so it's something that I would strongly encourage you to contact Senator Fields and encourage him to vote against HJR, HJR ten twenty-four. It is not, I mean, I guess in theory, it could bring more jobs to the state. But since it seems to be like the state grants Quality Jobs money to everybody that applies, I don't know how it would really make a difference. I think it's gonna do, shift the responsibility away from the legislature. And, uh, and, and take much needed revenue from the schools across, from, from school districts. You know, not everybody participates in this, there's only a few districts. Well, there are a few districts that get lots of money from this fund. Uh, generally, year in and year out, uh, we're gonna receive as, as much money as anybody else in the state of Oklahoma. Because, uh, we're very active, our Economic Development Authority does a good job of finding benefits for the companies that are here in Ponce City. And they do a good job of obtaining those funds for our companies, which I think is a great thing. Uh, and, uh, I, uh, would hate to see us lose this. I think in the day, it's probably devastating for rural Oklahoma if this passes.
But I would think with the Senate's pro-crimisty, pro-business, the governor probably would sign it if it gets to her desk. This has, if it's passed the House already, this has a very good chance of.
It has a great chance. And again.
I would think the Senate's gonna shut it down.
Well, you know, I don't, you know, Robin, I don't know, I know we have to try.
Yeah.
We have to try because again, this is not, this is not gonna do anything that's not being done for business right now. All it's gonna do is take the burden away from the state of Oklahoma to replenish these funds.
Other than the two percent cap right now, if, if a local commission wanted to give them a ten percent reduction on itself, that would be the only advantage of this.
Well, no, but the two percent cap is on the amount of tax revenue that's set aside to pay for this.
Oh, so the Job Quality Act can grant whatever percentage?
It grants a hundred percent exemption to have no more taxes for five years.
And that's understood, man.
The other part of this to remember that, then the Quality Jobs Act, that, the assessed value to that property is charged to the school district. So, you know, there's nothing in the law that makes, that this resolution makes provision for that. So you very easily could have a situation where you have a piece of property on the tax rolls and that property should be generating a hundred thousand dollars and have the Lord taxes for the school district. That's reported to the state, is chargeable in the state funding formula and we don't receive the money. So we lose revenue that we never give. Okay? This is a bad piece of legislation and it needs to be stopped. Okay? All right. And then on enrollment, uh, just a, uh.
One last question on charters. You told us at the last meeting that most of the legislation for charter school, I saw the tolls that turned one down the other day, that the local school boards are still, but.
Yeah, local school boards will be in control.
That part's still hanging in.
They are, they are developing some, some kinda some guidelines for, for school boards to look at. Uh, and then if you, if you turn a charter down, then a, uh, then they can't appeal that to the State Board of Education. And the State Board could go ahead and put the charter in your district. You know, I, I think the legislation that requires that, uh, and, you know, the detail's always how it reads. But I think that if the legisla-, language stays in the legislation that requires these charters to serve at-risk students, um, I think that will dramatically cut down the number of charters that are advocating for out in rural parts of the state. Uh, and then finally on enrollment, just let you know that, uh, our enrollment is, um, nineteen students higher on April first of twenty fifteen than it was on April first of twenty fourteen. And, uh, that's the first time this year that our enrollment has been higher than it was the comparable month year before. So, uh, I think that's pretty good. It's always like it when we have more kids, always is. Anybody, any questions? Uh, just one more thing before we go on, just wanna remind, uh, we, uh, in, in, in the various committee meetings last week, uh, we, uh, discussed, uh, future bond projects for the district. Just let the board know that we're in the process of, uh, putting together a survey that will go out to, uh, teachers, that will go out to parents, will then go out to the community. Uh, where, where we list various bond projects. We'll follow the same format we followed in the past, but we'll list the project and we'll list prices. We're just gonna talk, we're talking concept here about what kinda things the community believes is important. Uh, we'll come back and have a community meeting, hopefully sometime in May. And then, uh, we'll give a report to the board in June of what, what the surveys and the recommendations tell us. Uh, right now, the idea is to have a bond issue in October. In order to do that, we have to call it into the August board meeting. So that just kinda gives you a general timeframe of, of where we're headed with our next round of bond projects. Thank you.